Are you doing pictures?
For everybody to find a place to light and continue your conversations after the meeting, I appreciate it. We have a prayer day we led by Mr. Boyd. Both the National Memorial, uh, cursed, and the pledge is exercise for Mr. Beatty.
Would you bow with me, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity together. We ask that everything that we do bring glory and honor to you. Teach us and show us how to treat your people so that we make you proud. We want to be good stewards of everything about this college because we're here because we have a vested interest in this college. We love this place, whether we're paid or volunteer, whether we're paid or volunteers. We have a commitment to this place. Therefore, we want to be an example of your love in everything that we do. Bless every family represented here. Let us always be guided by you, led by you, and honor you in everything that we do. These blessings we ask and receive in your son Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Blessed is the religion of the United States of America and to the Republic of Texas. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the justice flag, our flag of allegiance to Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
We have a quorum present today. And the meeting is being recorded. Members of the public may access the meeting through the CTC website. Item two on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the board trustees held on June twenty-second, two thousand and one. That information is in your read ahead package. Anybody have any questions or comments on the minutes of the meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion. A motion we made, I have a motion in second, any discussion on the motion? All those who voted motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three is the chairman's update. And it's now opportunity for members of the public to suggest additional topics for discussion or address topics of interest with a presentation limit of three minutes. Is anyone present like to address the board? Seeing none, a couple of announcements. First of all, I'd like to extend congratulations to our chancellor, who has been selected by the Higher Education Coordinating Board to sit on the committee for the Technic College Formal Advisory Committee. That's an honor for us to have him do that to represent the community colleges in Texas. Thank you very much for volunteering. Another announcement, just for those of you who remember, today is the anniversary of the signing of the armistice that ended the Korean conflict. The armistice was signed today in nineteen fifty-three. And it's still in effect. Unfortunately, the war has never been terminated. Another item on information, I think I sent a copy of this to all the board members. The Community College Association of Texas trustees will have an annual meeting in September sixteenth to eighteenth at the Western Hotel at the Domain in Austin. Anyone who's interested to attend that should go ahead and make your reservations and give the information to Ms. Havens and she'll get the information for your reimbursement for your hotel and expenses going down there. And I understand Chancellor, if anybody interested in going there also?
That's my plan.
So it's a, it's not a very far trip and it gives you an opportunity to meet with and talk to people from other community colleges around the state and get to know some of your colleagues. And it's a, it's kind of an eye opener sometimes to see what else is going on and see how fortunate we are to have the leadership team that we have here and the facilities that we have here. So I'd encourage you to attend that if at all possible. And with that, we'll move to the chancellor's report.
Thanks, sir. Dr. Garrett? Saks COC action letter.
Good afternoon. I bring good news. We received a letter from Saks and I'll, I'll just tell you that on June seventeenth, they voted to continue our accreditation following the review of off-campus instructional sites as part of the fifth year interim report. As you recall, over the past year, we've, we submitted our fifth year interim report. It was reviewed and approved and then we had our off-campus instructional site review and we had one recommendation which was submitted and approved. And we are now just due for an onsite visit for those sites that were reviewed. Since the Department of Ed requires a physical onsite review, the virtual review that they had to do over the summer because of COVID will not suffice. So we'll be planning our, a visit from hopefully just the chair of the off-site instructional committee, but there may be others to come and visit Bethesda, Fort Rucker, Gatesville, Hill Country University Center and Frank Fickett Education Center. Egypt was reviewed, but we're not gonna go to Egypt. But thank you and I appreciate everyone that was involved with this, this reaccreditation, our fifth year interim report. And we were successful.
That's very important. And remember, this is at our expense. As a trustee with Saks COC, we, we wrote a letter, sent it to the Department of Education and it fell on deaf ears and they denied it. And that was, once we had these virtual visits, that should suffice. And they came back and said, no, that's not good enough. You're gonna have to send somebody down there. So Dr. Whelan made the recommendation that we send just the chair of that committee and not, not four or five people. That becomes very expensive for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Adie, Mr. Whitehall on Air Agency Certificate. Mr. Whitehall.
Good morning or good afternoon. I also get to bring some good news. Our Aviation Science Department completed a two-year review, FAA review of our curriculum and our student success rate. We were able to renew our Air Agency Certificate with the FAA for additional two years. It now expires at the June of two thousand and twenty-three. We, the Air Agency Certificate allows students to get a commercial pilot certificate with fewer hours. Also allows students to use their VA benefits for the flight fees at Central Texas College and help out in that way as well. So we, it was a difficult process with COVID, but we were able to get the numbers that we needed to successfully get that renewed.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehall and your team for doing, doing, doing that. Okay, videos, we'll start with videos. So Ms. Merle.
I have a cough drop in my mouth and I'm gonna be moving around, so I apologize if that is distracting for anyone. I, I believe I told you last time that we were gonna show you, oh, a typo. Video of the commercial that we have currently running, it is running now. It was on a few of the Olympic broadcasts. I don't know if anybody saw it there, but it's also running on other areas in the news.
Central Texas College knows this past year suddenly put our lives in reverse. Your dreams were put on hold. Jobs were furloughed or even lost. And childcare was shut down. But now, Central Texas College is ready to help you accelerate back to your dreams and beyond. From now on, it's only forward.
So the interesting thing about this commercial is obviously we didn't have time or money to recreate a brand-new commercial or shoot it. So this was a commercial from, I think about three years ago that we put together. They used the video and made some minor edits to it and then recorded a new voiceover. So it's basically same but different, very different in what it says. So that saved us a lot of money. And then I've told you guys that we do, we spend a lot of money on digital video. When the agency did their presentation to us to re-pitch the account, they kind of said, you know, you gotta get people's attention. And sometimes we do it with, like with these two videos in a kind of silly way. But this is what gets us, us some click-throughs, which is what we actually want them to end up on the website. And again, this is one of those things that when it's on digital, a lot of times people don't turn their volume on. So we have to rely on the words and what's going on in the video. And, and I have to tell you, this is not my favorite, but people love these monkeys. We've used them before. And I kept saying, can we just stop using the darn monkeys? But the problem is they show me results and these get the most clicks. So here goes the monkeys. Yeah, yeah, you like the monkeys too.
Very creative.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and click into the next slide, but this will be Dr. Adie's, I believe. So you don't wanna?
Thank you, Ms. Merle, for sharing those.
I'm not sure I can, I can have anything as entertaining as that. So the next slide is on college for kids classes that we have in Lampasses at the Lampasses County Higher Education Center. And we have been teaching courses there, but for this year, there were no college for kids courses scheduled. And so we asked if we could, we at CTC could take this over. So on the left, you see one course that was taught, eighteen students were in it. It was for kids between the ages of eight and twelve. And they learned life-saving techniques and how to use fire extinguishers. And the instruction was provided by the Lampasses Fire Department. And so they did hands-on simulations and I think it was a pretty warm day, as you can tell, kids enjoyed the water. And on the right, we had a class we taught. It was a class of twelve students between the ages of ten and fourteen. And they helped solve the case of the missing mascot. It was the Lampasses Police Department that assisted students with the DNA results, fingerprinting bike marks and other things they had to identify. Let's see. Let's see. Sometimes when we learn, sometimes we get notified by department chairs or by others that someone in their department has moved up and on. And here you see Dr. Chastity Clements. She is a faculty member in our business department. She also leads our net impact team. And she defended her dissertation on July sixteenth, graduated with her doctorate in business admin from North Central University. Her dissertation topic was best practices of black managers before and after implementation of diversity management programs. So congratulations to Chastity Clements for her getting her doctorate. All right, and here's a picture for college for kids robotics camps. As you know, we have a fairly robust college for kids program in the summer. And this one here is of the Lego Mindstorms Robotics and Coding Camp that we offered through our continuing education department. This camp was funded by the Texas Workforce Commission through the Governor's Summer Merit Program. There were nineteen kids enrolled. We had a course in June. That was one week long and then we also had one in July. So in June, we had nineteen kids and then July, we had thirteen. And the students applied for the scholarship to take this course. And really, it was designed for high, I mean, school-aged students. And they learned in the camp about fields of computer-integrated manufacturing by building the Lego Mindstorm EV Three kits. They made a CNC drawing machine, factory conveyor, pick-place robot and sorting machine. So Sam Jackson was the instructor and he came by quite frequently to check with the kids and tell them a little bit about our robotics program that we are kicking off this fall. And also Jeff Pyatt from recruiting came by to talk to the kids about the importance of education and benefits of getting a college degree.
Michelle Flores? You can see we've been busy this summer. Things haven't slowed down.
This is actually our summer membership drive. So just so you know, well, I'm general manager of KNCT FM. I'm also a CTC broadcast student, so that's really exciting that I got to move up. I handed everyone a little bit of information about our fall membership, our summer membership campaign. That's gonna mess me up. It was a, we do about three to four every year. And we didn't do one last summer because of COVID, but we got to do one this summer. And it actually was a really good turnout. We met a total goal of seventeen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. And we got a total number of pledges at a hundred and six. Now, five of those were Founder's Club. The Founder's Club members will donate between a thousand, sometimes more. We have a, we have a renewing gentleman in Kempner who donates every, every pledge drive. So this year, he donated two thousand. If we take out that Founder's Club, our average donation was about a hundred and nineteen dollars. So people can give, we do our on-air announcements from eight o'clock until four o'clock. And we tell them the number to call or they can go online to KNCT.org and pledge securely. So it was a really good turnout. Seventeen thousand is a really good number, honestly. So for a summer drive, it was about two weeks long. We do a pre-pledge where we can tell them just to go to the website, but if we're not in the office, we can't take the, over the phone calls.
Michelle, you, will you take pledges at any time?
At any time, yeah. So if we're not in the office, we obviously can't answer the eight-hundred number. It does direct towards our membership director, Lori Cisco. But you can go online and pledge securely at KNCT.org. And we also get mail-ins. The big thing about mail-ins, so I gave you this end total of our membership campaign, but some people will donate after the campaign's over, maybe their mail is going a little slow. So we, we expect to see maybe a few more in that are renewing members. The exciting part of this summer membership campaign is that about, I think it's thirty-nine total first-time givers. So we were able to get thirty-nine new givers that we can go back whenever renewal time comes in and we can let them know that we're starting our, our membership campaign over again or our pledge drive and letting them know where to give and when to give. And we see numbers, just as a little note, I just got a note yesterday or Monday that a woman who's on a fixed income, she just sent a check in for five dollars. So we get, we get five-dollar donations, we get two thousand.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pledge. I've gotta do that and I'm gonna challenge the board, each member to pledge, so.
Yeah, we would love to see you all. And hopefully, whenever everything kind of gets back to it, we can have each one of you there talking a little bit about, about CTC, any kind of activities going on. We, we really want to open it up more. Right now, it's just a team of four of us kind of going on air. We've got a couple hosts from shows that came in, but for the most part, it's just us kind of holding it down until we can get some more people in to come and talk about community events, anybody. So if you have any interest in coming in, please let us know.
We'll get Ms. Havens to schedule all of us in.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle. Is that it, Freddie? Is that the? That's all? Okay, that's it, sir. Yes, sir.
The, the presentations were excellent and the fact that we're accomplishing these things with our program is, is great. Are we able to come up with something that would allow us to give feedback to the community about the success that we're having in these and, you know, maybe have an expansion of them in the future?
You're, you're gonna hear a presentation later on this afternoon about that very subject.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you.
Moving on then, we'll go to item five on the agenda. Discuss and consider approval of the June interim financial statement and investment report. Mr. Liberty?
Okay, I hope everybody has a copy of the financial statements. Got a little, little different information to share this month. You know, we generally talk about how the numbers are looking and we're gonna continue to do that, but some information that I think is important. If you look at the numbers and you compare them to the previous year, which is always the first bell cow we always look at is where we look compared to the, the previous year. You know, it looks like we're actually better off than we were last fiscal year, which is true if you look at the numbers by themselves. But part of what you have to remember is these numbers include six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of lost revenue that I charged against the, her funding because we had to spend a certain dollar amount by a certain time and that was what was left, so I needed to spend it. So if you take that out, we're actually performing a little behind what we were last fiscal year by about two hundred thousand dollars. If you look at that by itself and you say, well, you know, we're still in the middle of a pandemic, that's really not that bad. And I would agree that that's not that bad. However, you start looking at where we've been and what's happened over the last two or three fiscal years. And just as a reminder to everybody, when we were tuition right now, from this year compared to last year is down fourteen percent. And when we started the pandemic, we talked about how we thought we would probably be, when, I mean, right when it first hit, we're talking March, you know, before that, that, that month was over, we thought we'd probably end up about twenty-five percent down. Well, we're working that way because the first year, we were down about sixteen percent. And now we're down another fourteen percent on top of that original sixteen percent. So you're starting to look at about the twenty-five percent number, which is what we anticipated. Now, the part that gets me a little nervous and, and the chancellor and I talked about it yesterday and today and Dr. Carter and I have talked about it. The early enrollment numbers for the fall are lower than I've ever seen them. I've just got, I gotta say it as clear as it is. We're down between thirty-five and forty percent. And when you're stacking that up against two years of declining numbers, that, that gets you concerned. We're doing a lot of great things. We are, we are getting the word out to people. Doc, you will remember General Weaver, when we had our foundation meeting just a week or so ago, we talked about the, her funds that we were awarding to students. And there were foundation board members that were surprised to hear, they just couldn't believe it, that we actually, we have reached out to students to the point of, all you have to do is go to the website and click here and you'll be eligible for these awards and they don't do it. So, you know, the chancellor and I talked about it and, and there's, there's something going on currently with this, the apathy that's going on, at least with the students that we have right now, that don't have that little bit of desire to where they can take some classes and almost take them without paying anything and actually take them and make a little money. I know that sounds strange. Charles asked me when he was coming in, he said, what do you get paid to take a welding class? And, and in all honesty, if a student, a student can take classes and the cost of their classes is gonna be less than what their award is gonna be. So they'd exactly, actually make a little money to take these classes. And we're doing a lot of advertising. I saw the ads, you know, the one that, that Barbara showed, I saw that pop up. I've seen where we've put out and, and you can see it on our webpage. When you open up the webpage, that talks about all the information that's out there. And for whatever reason, students just aren't wanting to do it. We're trying to give that money away as fast as we can and, and we're at the point now to where I'm gonna be stunned if we're gonna be able to give it all away. It's gonna flat surprise me. So that, that is leading to these numbers declining. The other problem we're having, and some of y'all may have seen it, especially if anybody reads the Army Times or looks at some of those items, but the change that the government made in the last year, that they changed their platform for how soldiers, Army soldiers register for their courses. It's been an absolute nightmare. They changed vendors and the system, maybe I'm, my fingers are crossed, maybe finally is just now working. And we're talking, they had a year to implement, they closed the other system down in March and here we are in July and maybe it's now working, but there have been articles in major newspapers and publications that have talked about how students, student soldiers are so frustrated because the system is so hard to operate, many of them are completely given up on their education. And I think that has a lot to do with why our numbers are where they are. So I just wanted to make y'all aware of how these numbers are continuing to drop. And I've, I feel that the institution is doing everything in their power to turn those numbers around. But, you know, the old expression, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. It almost is like that for some of these students. We had a foundation board member that said, oh, I'm gonna let these kids in Lampasses know and I promise you, you're gonna get enrollments just coming in like crazy. Well, I'm still waiting. I'm still waiting. I haven't seen them yet. But just wanted to share that bit of information. We're still financially sound. We have, we have continued, the reason why these numbers look as good as they do with these great decreases, as you well know, is we have cut, and I'm gonna, I'll give Ted credit, one time I'm gonna give you credit for this and after this, it's my expression from now on, but, you know, we've cut all the way down to the bone. And, and when you get to bone, you can't cut any farther unless you amputate. And, and we're at a point now to where, and I, I shared with the chancellor, he said, Bob, maybe we need to cut a little deeper. The problem gets to where if you cut just a little bit farther and you have a little bit of a bounce back in enrollments, you can't handle the enrollments. And that's, that's potentially even worse than not having the enrollment. So it's tough. I wanted to make sure that you guys understand these are the kind of things that, that all of the leadership group, we, they, they may not think about it twenty-four seven like I do, but I know they're thinking about it all the time because we're having discussions about it all the time. And I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that information. And I can answer any questions that you, that you might have.
Don, Sean?
I might have mentioned this before at, at another meeting, but I heard that nationally, there are gonna be fewer people enrolled in community college education. And so, you know, this goes along with what Bob, Mr. Necesser, Mr. Liberty was saying. But I guess just us being aware, cognizant that this is out there, if we can come up with some idea to capture here locally, we need to, you know, bring those ideas forward. But I appreciate the work you're doing.
The chancellor shared with me, because as you know, he's a member of quite a few committees around the state and the nation. And he said, all the community colleges in Texas are going through, through a problem. I, I think ours gets, gets exponentially bigger because of the catch that we have with the military. So we've got two pieces going against us. And I would never trade what we're doing with the military because it's a, it's a great mission, number one, and, and, and there's a, there's a market there, at least currently, to be captured. It's just, it's just they've put us in a position where we can't help those students because the system that the students are having to use is causing them so many problems.
I agree, as all of us do with Mr. Liberty, that military has been our reward over the years and so we want to certainly embrace them in the future and the present.
Yeah, we're, and we're, Donna, we're doing that. And as Mr. Liberty said, we've been very creative in how we are managing this, this shortfall. But we've also been very creative on how we're trying to pull out of it. So, you know, I'm, I'm an optimist, but I will tell you that it's concerning. But we've gotta continue to press forward and we're, and we're doing that. You know, the military changed and we lost a lot of enrollments to the military. Are they gonna come back? I, I don't know. You know, the Navy has really just done away with most of their programs. They're trying to create a community college of the Navy. They don't have any education centers anymore. Students are having to go online. We're doing everything we can to meet, meet the needs of, of those Navy students while they're... their, while their hierarchy is trying to build a community college. Of course, Air Force Community College has been around a long time, we know about that. And then the Army's now developed what they call the Army University. So again, they're, they're dipping into what, what they think they wanna do. But, so it's difficult, it's difficult for those, those enlisted guys to go to school, but eventually, hopefully, it'll, it'll pan out because it will start affecting their ability to recruit and retain soldiers, sailors, and airmen, so, yeah. But we're not, we're not in it alone, and so, we, but we're, we're watching it.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Liberty? I'll entertain a motion then. Motion been made and seconded to approve the interim financial statement. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye? Motion carries. Item number six is discussed and considered approval to the award, the fourth option year for the contract for a constituent relationship management system with target X in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, with the period of September the first, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Malone?
Yes, we went over some slides and answered some questions last week about our CRM, and it is a two-part system, so it requires us to have both line item number six and seven voted on separately, but we are recommending that we exercise the fourth and final option year with target X, and that's what's in item si, six, in the amount of seventy-five thousand. So that will be our last option year, and then we will have to decide if we stick with them or go with something different.
So move. The motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye? Motion carries. Item number seven is discussed and considered approval to the award of the fourth option year to the sales force in support of target act system in an amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars, with the period of September the first, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Malone?
And, and this portion is sales force licenses for the, for the people that we have using the product. So this allows our admissions people and our recruiting folks and our student success folks to go in and send emails, texts, and, and look at information in the system. So I'm recommending that we are gonna exercise the fourth option and final option because we have to have this to be able to, to run target X in item six.
Any questions, Ms. Malone? No. Motion been made and seconded to approve. All those in favor of the motion, say aye? Motion carries. Item number eight is discussed and considered approval of the award, the third option year for the contract for advertising media planning and buying and other marketing consulting services with Carl's Burke Advertising for the period of September the first, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Malone?
And again, with Carl Burke, we are recommending that we exercise this third option year. You saw kind of how they work with us in terms of making sure we are doing the things that are giving us results, and also in stretching our dollars as much as we can with production so that we can put our money into what we actually wanna do with it, which is advertising.
Any questions, Ms. Malone? Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion. The motion been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, say aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number nine is discussed and considered approval to award contracts for the comprehensive insurance coverage to Alliance Insurance Services Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and off of Jake Gallagher, Risk Management Services Incorporated, the amount of sixty-six, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, fifty-six dollars, for the period of first September, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, with four one-year option periods. Mr. Hickman?
All right, good afternoon, Chancellor and members of the board. As we discussed last week, this is to create new insurance contracts since our, all of our contracts expired this year. This is for all of the insurance except for property, which was begun last month, and the cyber and gun range, for which we got no bids this time, and I'll be bringing those to you next month for the meeting. We, we chose what we felt was the best options for the college, and this is best interest of what we have to cover everything that we need, and the administration is recommending approval for both of these contracts.
Any questions, Mr. Hickman? Motion been made, I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number ten is discussing approval of the award for the second option year of the contract for group term life insurance with AD and D Insurance with the Life Insurance Company of North America, Cigna, in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars for the period of first of September, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Jordan?
Good afternoon. I'm here to request the continuation of the life insurance, and as you recall, this is the life insurance, the special life insurance that we've been providing employees and a select group of retirees for a number of years. So I'm asking that we exercise the second and final year of this contract in the amount of four hundred thousand.
I heard it. Motion? And a second. Any discussion on that motion? Now, all in favor of the motion, say aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, number eleven, is something that we did not workshop, so we'll have an opportunity to talk about this one. Discuss and consider approval of expenditure not exceed fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars in support of the Central Texas College Open House event. Dean Starkey?
Before Dean Starkey gives her presentation, I wanna explain that we, we missed this at the board workshop. There's a huge committee of staff and faculty who wanted to put on a community event, and they've been working on that. Unbeknownst, a couple of us, the, but the budget wasn't, we, we wanna bear that budget. So, but we were aware that it has to be approved because in policy, Board Policy Three Sixty-Seven, there's a requirement that any public or community relations kind of activity that exceeds a thousand dollars must have Board, Board approval. So she will go through that and go through the items. It's a full day here on campus. It looks like every department and every employee's gonna be involved in it, and they're going to invite the entire community, both Copper's Cove, Colleen, Harker Heights, and Nolanville, to participate and come to that. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a very big endeavor for us, and so that's why we're bringing it to you today. The, the event is scheduled for August fourteenth. Now, if it were later in August, then we could do it at the August workshop, but since this event will occur before the workshop, we need to do it today. So Dean Starkey, if you wanna do your presentation?
Sure. Good afternoon. I am excited to share with you that CTC, as Mr. Manopoulos has shared, is planning to host an open house on Saturday, August fourteenth, from nine AM to two PM. And it's planned as a way for CTC to let the community know that we are open, and we are ready to help them reach all of their educational goals. That's what our, that's what we wanna do, and that's the focus of this event. We are targeting many populations, prospective students, current students, former students. We are targeting families, children of all ages, the ISD, community and business partners and leaders, alumni and retirees of CTC, and more. We want everyone to come to campus, check us out, get some help, have some fun, and learn something new about CTC. That is our goal. We are incredibly excited about this event, but it is a large-scale event. We're gonna start the morning with a student event where we will help the students, whether they are current or former or prospective, dual credit, a student interested in the trades, a student who might be interested in continuing education or adult education. We're gonna help all of those. We will have resource tables, we will have short presentations, but then they will be able to have individualized help because all of those offices will be open, and those processes will be in place to help students manage all of that that day. We will host a lunch outside. There will be inflatables, there will be a DJ with music and games, so just a really fun atmosphere. I think the part that I'm most excited about, though, is we, our academic departments and most of our administrative areas are also hosting events all throughout the day. We have fifty-plus presentations, demonstrations, tours happening throughout the day that really highlight what CT is all about and the different services and educational opportunities that we have, and these are quite innovative programs. They're, they're not just a, a program on, this is what math is. I mean, it's, it, it makes, it brings math to, to life in all of these areas. So that's what's really exciting for us. The planetarium is gonna be open, the bookstore's gonna be open, Great Western's gonna be open. And we will also host a, a social for our alumni as well as the retirees. So it's a full day, and I've only mentioned the highlights. The budget for this event is not to exceed fourteen thousand, five hundred. The budget covers things like food, equipment, signage, marketing materials, postage, et cetera, et cetera. Because the open house is an important, is an, an important event for CTC to host, to tell the community that we are open, that we are here, and we are ready to serve, the administration recommends approval of this expenditure. I can answer any questions.
I might add that the money is, the dollars are in the budget, so it's budgeted.
Does anyone have any question, Mr. Starkey?
I'd certainly be in favor of the fourteen thousand, and if possible, have a little slush fund go along with that. Is there any way that we could get our news TV stations to come and have a interview, or could we contact them before then? That seems to be a good way to get everybody aware.
I think that's on the, on the agenda, and I think, Ms. Malone? Yep. We are, yes, it's, it's part of it.
As a matter of course, we're gonna try to push a little more than normal this time.
That's what I was alluding to.
It's never any guarantee, because if something bleeds, it bleeds, you know?
Yes.
Good.
We're good news.
Sound like a good program.
Good.
What are the, what are the hours to you?
Nine AM to two PM, Saturday, August fourteenth.
And I just had an administrative question about, you were saying that you didn't know that they were planning this, and they brought it to you all?
No, we knew they were, we knew it was being planned. I wasn't aware of the, the extent of the budget at that point. So when we finally got the budget numbers, we looked at it and said, oh, wait a minute, it's got to go before the workshop, so.
And I agree with what Mr. Holmes from will say. We, we do need to get more of the media out there. Current country, Harvard's really full of a lot, especially college students don't read the newspaper, they read everything else. But we, we, we need to get the word out for people to.
Absolutely.
Since I know it's gonna be August fourteenth, I'll make sure I don't plan anything. I'll show up myself, hopefully bring my new college student with me. And, and that's good, because especially with so much online learning that's going on over the last year, we can like, look, you can come face-to-face to them, interact, these are professors, this school can do it for you. Have a little bit of fun at the same time. But we just need to get the marketing part out there, and we'll, we have enough money in the fourteen thousand, five hundred, we don't have a lot of opposition, but we have enough in there to cover marketing, we need to do to get people to work that it's gonna happen on that day. And we're looking at three weeks, and it's gonna happen, right?
Correct.
Correct.
That's not long, because there are people out there planning, especially by that time of year, it's the last minute of vacation, let's go, and they pop smoke, and they're out. Sorry, they're on, they, they go in at last vacation, they pack up, they leave, and they're planning, and we just need to focus on them and get them out there, especially like, it is legitimate, if you don't mind me on a red. You know, we're trying to get students in there to, that are going throughout the fall semester, they're going, but don't forget, we have students in CCISD and KISD that are beginning seniors and juniors that are making those plans for when they graduate, and we can give up there to see what's gonna go on on this campus. That's a good way to put them in your hand, right? Give us a try first before you go to the university level. Be more prepared before you go, because a lot of those kids lost a lot over the last year, and this is our way we can focus on them and bring them to Florida before they go out there and get their bachelor's degrees.
Several of us were in a meeting yesterday with KISD, and we did let them know that we were planning an open house, and they were very excited. No, absolutely, I was just saying, we were, we are definitely gonna target all of the ISDs. I'm probably speaking for Barr, but we intend to target all of the ISD and all of the students and, and all of our communities.
I live in officers' home, and so many times people forget about the other side of what's good, but we live in our little planet over there. But we have a lot of kids up there, we got five hundred kids that graduate there every single year, and they're looking for what next in their life and stuff, and we can be that steering point for them in there.
Absolutely. That's what we hope this event is all about, is, you know, opening doors for people that need to have those doors open.
Excellent comment by Mr. Pierce. And when they're be ready for motion, I'd like to make the motion, please.
Well, the question that hasn't been answered yet, Mr. Pierce asked about the money, the fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars, has that been earmarked? Where is the money located?
I'm gonna let Mr., it, it has been allocated, and it has been earmarked for this event already.
Send the budget.
Yes.
Okay. That was his question, I don't think I ought to answer.
Is that enough to cover any other expenses?
Right now, we have a detailed plan for the, the program that we've, that we have outlined and we, we have presented, and we believe that that will cover the event at this point.
Yeah, you know, there's certain expenses that they have on here, like the bounce house and the rock wall climbing, balloons, food and beverage, decorations, cart and transportation, there's a tent, signage, T-shirts, and things to give away, so they've, they've detailed it out pretty well.
I mean, but like what I was asking, was like, any, any further Facebook marketing, Facebook ad, Instagrams?
That's, that's, yes, that's all covered, and Ms. Malone's got most of that covered already. And the whole purpose for us doing this is exactly what you've talked about. I mean, that's, that's the reason that we're doing it, and to, and to reach out to those young folks in our, in our school districts that we serve, close to us. I will tell you that we look at those numbers each year of where, where students wanna go to school, where they're reaching out. We are number one for Copper's Cove ISD and for Colleen ISD. We're the number one pick for colleges. You're not gonna get every one of those kids to sign up and go to college, it's not gonna happen. So even though we have five hundred graduates over there, and we have over two thousand in, in KISD, we don't, we don't get maybe, maybe half of those is what we'd hope to get. So, but doing things throughout the year to encourage them to do dual credit and early college high school, we do have access to them, and with our outreach programs with the counselors, and now this. So there's a lot of things that we will push down to those districts, and they will put it out to those kids as well through their system, so.
Well, we have an opportunity here for the KNCT FM live broadcast from the activities.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
We have a service area that goes from Fredericksburg all the way out to where Brady, so we've got lots of ISDs out there, and I'm sure they're all included. Hopefully, we don't forget about Gatesville, and we don't forget about Pick Oak, you know? We gotta get everybody involved in this, including Ding Dong. Go out to Ding Dong Cafe and advertise.
But, you know, if you look at, Dean Starkey, you might wanna talk about some of these things that you, like the radio station, the, 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 General Weaver mentioned, Nursing Simulation Center, they, go down there and go through that, get to see that. Origami, gaming, library tours, Guess the Herbs up at the, with Hospitality and, and gardening, they're gonna do that, appetizer demos, so all of that's gonna be involved with hospitality and Communications Department. And Communications Department, Office Technology, Early Child Development, Computer Information Technology, How to Fish, Charlie Brown Halloween's. I mean, it just goes on and on and on, so.
It's, it's an amazing list of, of things that our academic and administrative departments are doing to really show the community what we have to offer, which is what our goal is. We're, we're an amazing place and we need to, we need to share that with everybody.
Meet a successful former student? There you go.
Ms. Colley?
Just a couple of groups that I'd like you to add to your list if it's not on there. Or somehow communicating with the parents.
Okay.
That's gonna, you're gonna hear that a lot from me, I'm gonna be the advocate for the parents.
The student event, just so that you know, that I talked about, that's, that's opening the event, it is open obviously to parents.
Yeah, I mean, but we got, we, we must get the word to them. So we need to be creative to find ways to communicate with the parents, because not every child is on financial aid and not everyone has an advocate for them, so we need to communicate with the parents. The second thing is the communication for churches, for congregations.
Okay.
Which is a powerful medium for.
Right.
Different things that occur in the communities. So most churches have a web address. I saw a listing in the Sunday's paper that had every church or every congregation listed in there. And I don't know that all the webs, all their websites were listed, but I would, I would suggest that you check it and see.
Absolutely.
But, because a lot of communication along those lines or shared with people in, in church congregations.
Oh, that's a great idea, thank you.
Mr. Armstrong?
I'm ready to make the motion to approve the fourteen thousand. And if Mr. Nester won't kill me, I would like to provide a five thousand dollar contingency fund. In addition to that, it can be returned, but I, I'd like to, for the program to know that we're really in support of this and it's a great idea.
I'd like to second that, I'd like to second that motion if.
Well, I think his motion is that he would like to approve this to the tune of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, is that correct?
That'd be okay with me, with five thousand to be a contingency fund.
It's all contingency, but it's, you're, you're asking to increase fourteen five to nineteen five, is that correct?
Okay. Yep, that'd be fine.
That's, that's, that's his motion.
I'd like to second that motion. I, I was understanding Mr. Armstrong was gonna make a contribution of five thousand dollars. I still second the motion he made.
I better put my mask back on.
Just, just to clarify, we, we have a motion that's been seconded that we authorize nineteen thousand five hundred dollars for this expense, that is not to exceed nineteen five. So that gives you a cushion if we run into contingencies that Mr. Armstrong is concerned about. That's the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hello, is the favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Hello, is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda is recommending topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements by the board members. Mr. Armstrong, we'll start with you.
This fellow here. He, I think you mentioned that a couple of minutes ago that maybe we can have discussed about ideas for making our, our foundation more available or more aware to people. And I don't know if we, we're gonna follow up on that or not. Did, have you?
The conversations are ongoing to.
Okay.
Provide a vehicle to do that.
Okay, thank you. That, that's, as long as it's still a moving program or idea.
I got, I got a question, I was just thinking about KNC T. Is, is our radio station, is it, is it on a app also, or is this a website and a podcast?
We're on a app, at least today on Monday.
So I don't have a question, if I was gonna see if we can talk about seeing if they can out for it.
Yeah, we have three apps to roll, so we have one for HBT station, we have one for Aces, we have them second beautiful, and we have one for a student station, which is free.
Can I, can I give, can I give that, someone send that to me? So I could.
Debbie, Ms. Havens, I'll get that information to you.
Ms. Colley?
Yeah.
I've got a couple of items I'd like to consider, board consider for our next workshop or workshop thereafter. First item is we give out scholarships, and in my experience, it's getting more and more difficult to give away money to scholarships. I don't understand that, but then I'm from a different generation. But one of the things that I've picked up on in reviewing some of the online classes that nonprofits are advertising and, and using is they give away a computer to anybody who registers in the course. And if they pass the course, they get to keep the computer. And I brought this up in our workshop with the foundation board and got kind of a cold reception on it. So I'm wondering if maybe the foundation needs a little incentive to think outside the box. I'd like for us to consider that as an agenda item in a future meeting to discuss the world with us, is this a possibility? Is this something that, that we could use as a marketing technique to compete with the online profit organizations? Just, just to throw it out for discussion. And the second item along with that same thing is traditionally, in my opinion, students think of tuition as paying for the fees to the college to take a class and maybe the books. I don't think they quite understand that also includes living expenses, transportation, different kinds of things that are college expenses that are related to food, that kinda stuff. And I don't know that we really hit that very hard, that we don't really put that information out there, that they consider the total impact of what happens when you get a scholarship. So I'd like for us to, to consider that research, if you will, to see how many people we're missing out on just because they don't understand the total concept of what we're giving them if we give them a scholarship. And we've, we've got lots of scholarship money out there, the foundation has, has got a bunch, but it doesn't seem like it's catching hold for some reason.
Mr. Chair, you, when you, when I sat on the foundation board with you, I was always, I am, I was always amazed that we, we bragged about how much money we had, not how much we were giving away. And that did not always sit well with me. I, I want us to be able, the money is no good if it's just, I mean, if it's just sitting, setting there. We would stop setting up scholarships for people we love and, and for ourselves, out of our own funding. But I just, I want, I would like to see our foundation be able to brag, so to speak, about how many scholarships we've given away and, and the need for students. So I, I totally agree, I think it'll be a great opportunity for them. That was before Dr. Carter took over responsibility for that department. I know that changes will come just by knowing who she is, but I really would like to see us get to a point where we, we, we really spend some of the money that's there.
Any other comments?
I've, I've just got to say, yours and, and Ms. Colley, ideas are great. And that's, I agree, that's a step in the right direction, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll look at those in a future workshop. At this juncture in our meeting, we have to call for an executive session. We have a responsibility for our annual evaluations of our employees, that is the chancellor and the auditor. So if the board would meet me at the, across all of the boardroom, we'll take up those items to, to discuss.
I sat in that chair. I, I don't understand why I didn't have one sent to my house yet. The black one's beautiful, I like the black one. I didn't sit down with the black one, it was beautiful. I sat down, I told Joanne, I said, have you sent this yet? I didn't, I didn't find her clips. I said, have you sent it? She said, no, I said, you need to. Assuming that. They're probably twenty years old. They fit me, and I was big ass, and I was very comfortable. I was trying to, it's tough, it's tough with your hands and a lot of your back, a lot of where it's. Look, that was, that's why I'm not doing a lot of work with my wife. Yeah, that's what happened. Just, yeah. Wait, I'm speaking. Get up every hour. I like the thought you did, you thought there was a reason to go. Hey, they've approved, but that doesn't mean I'm. If you're going to capitalize the, 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 and marketing. And I don't like that. You waste more than money out here than anybody. Big guy, full of tears, let it grow back. You buy ten, then you gotta store it, and then you gotta pay. I'm telling you, the ten idea sounds like a great idea until. Oh, you're the one, you're the one that's gonna give them. Okay, so the one they have here is just gonna be like, be kind of handy.
I'm so extended on ten. Oh, for you? Buying one?
I may. I mean.
Yeah, I only did a couple of hours. Yeah. I mean, she was, so that I almost looked like you now. When you, when we were, when you, when you rolled down the window, I was looking and I almost said...
But, um, some of the officers are kind of playing. I turned and think, I'm breaking down, I'm going off tips, then run around the living room. Like camera keeps going.
That's session two there on the corner.
Nobody else has.
What, what, oh, yeah. He's stretching his legs.
Is that why you're going to walk in? Is that why you're walking by? Smoking something in there?